Hi, everybody.
Oh, great. It's live. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Can you all hear me now?
Yep. Yes.
Great, alright, I think we're ready to go. Alright, good morning and welcome to our 11:30 AM August 18, 2020 study session. A few announcements and then we'll move on to our regular meeting. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on community television, Channel 25, streaming on the city's website, cityofsantacruz.com. All council members are participating in this meeting remotely, and I want to thank the public for staying home to view today's study session, sorry. If you wish to comment on the study session topic today, please call in using the instructions on your screen. Please mute your television or streaming device once you've called in and listen through your phone. Please note there is a delay in streaming, so if you continue to listen on your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to speak. When it's time for public comment, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and when it is your turn to speak during public comment, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set to two minutes. You may hang up once you've commented on your item of interest. And with that, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Byers? Councilmember Byers?
I think she's muted.
She is, I think she sounds like she can't hear me, maybe?
Let me see if I can unmute her, actually.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. It's my screen keeps saying waiting. Waiting.
Well, we can hear you now.
Okay. Okay.
So, Councilmember Byers is here. Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Brown? Boulder?
Here.
Watkins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Myers?
Here.
And Mayor Cummings?
Here.
So, we only have one item on our agenda today, which is the fiscal year 2021 budget update. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, this is an item you will have to comment on. Now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, the council members who brought the item, all of our questions from the council. We will then take public comment and return to the council for deliberation. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager to kick us off today. And then also, I want to ask if you're not speaking, if you can please mute and avoid some of the echo that we're getting in feedback.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'll do a brief introduction and then I'll be turning it over to management partners who'll be doing the update on the forecast. So, just to start, as everyone knows, the pandemic has had a really devastating impact on our community as well as city finances. And the pandemic hit us in the middle of budget development in March, and little was known about. Is my speaker not working? Can you hear me?
Your microphone is breaking up a little bit.
Alright, can you hear me okay now?
That's better.
Alright. Let's get closer to my microphone. So, as you know, the pandemic hit us in the middle of our budget development, and little was known about what the impact would be at that time, particularly the long-term impact. And our initial projections were based on really limited information about the impact of the pandemic. So, the proposed budget ended up being essentially a draft budget for the council to consider. And then the adopted budget was really an interim budget, recognizing that we would need to make changes and likely would only really get worse. We knew that we were expecting changes that would require more, a larger deficit. Because we recognized early that we would be facing deficits, we took early actions to slow the bleeding. We implemented a hiring and spending freeze, essentially. We also implemented an early retirement program, and we began discussions with our labor groups to initiate furloughs. And I want to thank our employees who were willing to sacrifice in order to help the city implement the furloughs. We have 10% furloughs in effect as a result. These early actions have saved the city approximately $8 million, but unfortunately, it's not sufficient, as you'll hear. The other thing we've done is hired management partners to assist us with updating our forecast, and they'll be presenting their updated model to you today. Not surprisingly, as I said, the update is not good news. The budget picture has worsened, and it is really at a scale comparable to the Great Recession. So, it's a longer-term structural in nature. The council has recognized the need to act and appointed a budget subcommittee. It's comprised of councilmembers Myers, the mayor, Cummings, and councilmember Brown, which have been providing input into the modeling and will be developing recommendations for council consideration in September. Unfortunately, there will be very difficult decisions and actions before the city council in the coming weeks and months. And the purpose of today is to clearly present our outlook to you and to the community, to present possible strategies and outline next steps and get your feedback and the feedback of the community. We're not asking council to take, you know, final action today. Action will be required at your second meeting in September. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Andy Bownap, who will be kicking off the presentation for management partners. And then we'll be happy to answer questions as we go through the presentation and after the presentation's call. All the city department heads are here as well, so they're all available to answer any questions you may have about the individual departments or any aspects of the city budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Martine. I'm Andy Bownap with Management Partners, and I'm here with my colleagues Steve Toler and Bob Leland. And just this first slide is just a little bit of an introduction to our firm. We have worked for hundreds of California cities and understand municipal budgeting and municipal operations. And that's really what we're brought in by Santa Cruz to help with. And as you know, cities in California, actually throughout the United States, are experiencing a fiscal emergency. And Santa Cruz brought us in to help get an early start on addressing the impacts of this emergency. Next slide. Could I have the next slide, Bob? Oh, thank you. Just to give you an overview of today's presentation, we are going to be addressing three main topics. Our updated forecast, some comparative research done with cities that are similar to Santa Cruz. Most importantly, some budget strategies which we've developed in consultation with the city's executive management team and also our own experience working throughout California. And then we're transitioning into the council's and SaaS discussion of next steps. And just let me introduce these three topics quickly. The forecast represents our best impact or best estimate of the impact on various revenue sources that the city relies upon. We probably need to underscore that this is a work in progress as we don't have a particularly good understanding on the COVID-19 recession. It's unlike any previous recessions in terms of its timing. It's come on exceptionally strong, fast. But there's been significant federal stimulus applied, which has helped, and there may be more of that. So, there are significant unknowns. But the bottom-line conclusion from our forecast is that use of reserves alone won't be enough for Santa Cruz to maintain its solvency, that budget strategies are going to be required beyond using the reserves. So, the second part of our presentation concerns some comparative work we've done with other cities. This is important not because there's any such thing as a perfect comparison. Santa Cruz is a unique city unlike any other city in the state, but there are some value in getting comparisons because you can reflect on how other cities provide municipal services and how they're staffed and what their budgets are and so forth. We judge Santa Cruz is in some ways more vulnerable to this recession because you are both a home for higher education, which is significantly impacted, and a tourism destination. But we also judge that Santa Cruz may be more resilient in this recession because you are a regional tourism draw, and people are still anxious to be able to get out when they can do so safely and visit locations that they can access using usually their vehicle. So, the third part of our presentation, we'll talk about strategies. And as I mentioned, these are developed based on discussions with city staff, but also our own knowledge of how California cities operate. And it is clear that some consideration of revenue increases or expenditure reductions or a combination will be required because reserves alone are not going to be sufficient. Everything that we suggest has been tried and proven within California local government, but of course, Santa Cruz is unique. And so, your strategies are going to be developed through public discussion and will be customized for the Santa Cruz setting. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Bob Leland, who's going to talk about our forecast. And then Steve Toler is going to talk about the comparisons and the budget strategies.
Thank you, Andy. This is Bob Leland. I'm going to start off by taking a look back last May when you were doing budget hearings. Staff presented at the time a five-year projection of annual shortfall in the general fund and then the resulting general fund balance. As you can see, after being in the positive in fiscal '19, fiscal '20, the year we just ended, was going to be a $10.4 million shortfall. However, that was shown as improving significantly over the next couple of years, and by fiscal '23, the general fund would be back to running surpluses. However, the big shortfall caused by these three years of negatives would pull the general fund balance into as low a level as $16.7 million. And even by fiscal '25, the general fund would still be in deficit. Obviously, that's not something that can be allowed to happen, but independent of budget corrections, this was the view back in May. I should note that the balance projection here is for the available balance only. It excludes the city stabilization reserve, which is another some $17 million. Okay, well, that was then. This is now. The forecasted deficits are significantly worse than the original city projection. Here on the left, you see the annual surplus or shortfall, and there's a lot of red ink there. I should note that the reason why fiscal '21 looks better in comparison to the fiscal years on either side of it is that fiscal '21 now includes the furloughs and the early retirements that the city manager spoke to. It also includes almost $800,000 of CARES Act funding. One thing that this forecast does not include is any potential money from Prop 15, the split role measure, which is on the November ballot. That is still speculative at this point, and frankly, the bulk of the revenue won't be coming in until fiscal '25. And so, it's beyond the time where the city needs to take action. So, basically, the fiscal year '20 budgeted revenues are almost $10 million higher in the city forecast than they are in the current forecast. So, the main concern is on the revenue side. The expense estimates were generally on target. The chart on the right shows fund balance, and the blue line is the reserve goal. Ideally, that's where you'd like to be. The green line is general fund balance, and that's available balance plus stabilization reserve. That shows it with no recession. So, there was going to be a downward trend in any event, even without recessions. It's just that with the recession, which is the red line, you hit negative territory more quickly. With the furloughs and the early retirements and with CARES Act funding, reserves would be depleted by the end of fiscal '22 year. And so, we are in fiscal '21 now, so we got a year to take action. And so, we've started to do that, but you're going to need to take further steps at corrective budget actions in the current fiscal year. Now, the risk factors, some of which Andy alluded to, they begin and end with the coronavirus. The first wave isn't finished. Cases are continuing to increase throughout the state and the county. There has been some reinstatement of controls. The largest growth in cases now is the 18 to 40 age range, and a lot of unknowns surround K-12 school reopenings. There have been some pretty rocky rollouts throughout the nation. A widely available vaccine is going to be the key to long-term recovery, but not only having it available, but having people use it and having the faith in it. In terms of the general economy, unemployment rate remains quite high, just over 10% in the U.S. and almost 15% in California. So, we're significantly worse off than the U.S. as a whole. Home values, though, do continue to climb. There are enough buyers chasing, even though the available homes for sale have diminished, there are enough people chasing those sales to keep values up. New construction and home sales have slowed nationwide and statewide, but values are hanging in there. There is going to be an expected glut of empty office space, especially in core urban areas. And suburbs are going to regain daytime population. We still have no replacement for the CARES Act, and that expired the end of last month. As Andy mentioned, in terms of tourism, the city is more of a regional draw, so less reliant on people flying in. But commercial flights are down 70% from July of last year. Hotel occupancy nationwide is only 42%. There's still a concern about the safety of large groups, and what you're seeing is virtual conferences, empty convention centers. A special risk for Santa Cruz is that you're a college town, and that situation has been evolving over the last couple of months. Classes are basically online. The overall onsite student population is going to be lower, which is going to hurt local merchants further. And some of these changes may just become permanent fixtures of campus life. We're just going to have to watch and see how that evolves. Couple of other key economic trends. I mentioned unemployment rates. The chart on the left shows the U.S. unemployment in the red line, California at the blue line. You can see how that has escalated. The State Department of Finance indicates the potential for unemployment to rise as high as 25% in California and significantly higher under what they call an extended disruption scenario. The table on the right shows changes statewide in taxable sales is put together by the HTL companies as of June of this year. Now, there's a lot of red ink there. The first column here of fiscal '19-'20 is that the fiscal year just ended, there were massive decreases emanating from really just a three, three-and-a-half-month period at the end of the fiscal year. A lot of those negatives are going to carry over into the year that we're now in, 2021 fiscal year. The one bright spot is really online sales. As you can see, a big jump last year, another big jump this year. A lot of that is from people changing their buying patterns, ordering online as they stay at home. But it's also aided by the Wayfair decision on out-of-state sales, and so that is kind of the bright spot, a little bit for the food and drugs that are taxable. But that has been a big impact hurting the sales tax. So, let's take a look at revenues for the city. Divided these into two categories. The highly elastic revenue sources, which are the ones being affected in real time, very responsive to economic changes. And we have high losses for sales tax, TOT, transfer tax, admission and parking taxes. And we will have an impact for business license tax next year. There's a one-year delay there. And then some medium losses for construction permits, other fees and fines. You can see on this upper chart the significant drop-off in revenues from the prior fiscal year. This chart is showing historically, the blue line is the actual amounts for these revenue sources compared to the red line is budget. And you can see how initially the budget was assumed to be at this higher level. Clearly, we're not there. We're significantly lower. There will be a recovery over several years, back to the green line, which is where you would be without any recession. And then by fiscal '27, we're assuming recessions being on about a seven-year cycle, we'll have another recession, not as bad as this one, but that tends to be the cycle. Okay, so these are the elastic sources, and they comprise about 43% of the total general fund revenue. Now, you take a look at the lower chart, these are other revenue sources, and they tend to be more stable. There was this one jump, which you can ignore, which is the pass-through of the POB proceeds. But other than that, you can see that there was a decline in revenues in response to the Great Recession, but been pretty stable. Growth's been slow but steady over the last several years, and we're assuming that it'll be relatively steady going forward. So, the property tax wouldn't be hit for two years anyway, and we're assuming a minor impact. Minor impact for utility user tax and no losses for cannabis tax and all other revenues. And again, this other revenue category does include about $800,000 from the CARES Act, but it does not include any potential revenue for Prop 15 split rule, which wouldn't be available until around '24, '25 fiscal year. So, one of the things that you can do with the model that we prepared for the city is come up with a wide range of scenarios of potential revenue impact. What you've been looking at is this middle case, the baseline, and that's about a $24 million revenue loss. As the chart shows, you can see the upper green line is the revenue without a recession. The lower line is the revenue with a recession, and the yellow area is the projected revenue loss. So, this is an L-shaped recovery over four years. In theory, we could have more of a U-shaped recovery. Initially, people were talking about a V shape, but that ship has sailed. It's going to be a longer recovery than that. And even now, for this best case, you really need everything to go right from now on, which is unlikely. Over on the right, you'd have an extended L shape, which could rise to a $32 million loss. You know, there are some risks, and the worst case is probably more likely than the best case. But we're here in the middle right now from this baseline $24 million of loss. Comparing back to the Great Recession, there are some lessons from that period. No two recessions are alike, and this one is certainly unique. But note again that in the Great Recession, it took three years for the city to get to their peak loss, which occurred in fiscal '10. And then it was still high for the next couple of years and then tapered off relatively quickly. By fiscal '14, the elastic revenue sources, including sales tax, TOT, were actually running better than they had prior to the recession. And property tax was still running below. So, this shows you that it could take multiple years to hit a peak, and it can take multiple years to recover. Over here on the COVID-19 recession, under this baseline case, major impact right out of the gate. 11% loss driven by the elastic revenue sources, largely the ones that we mentioned, the sales tax, TOT, admissions, parking. These are the ones that were the major loss, and we're seeing a gradual improvement so that by fiscal '24, basically, no remaining loss. You can also see, looking back on the left, the Great Recession had a more significant involvement with property tax, which we're not envisioning to be the case when you look over here on the right on the COVID-19 recession. So, small property tax impact, large immediate impact on the elastic sources, multiple years to recover. Now, switching for a moment to the expenditure side, here are some of the key assumptions. For salaries, we're using the current MOUs, and thereafter, 2% COLIS are assumed. As I mentioned before, we have a 10% furlough built in and the impact of the early retirements with a one-year freeze on positions. A handful of positions will be filled sooner than that. We're assuming no general fund FTE increases. We would like to be able to have the capacity to increase staffing to deal with increased workload and population over time. But when you're in a deep hole, stop digging. So, we're not assuming any FTE increases. We do have built-in step increases, and we also have built-in salary savings from vacancies. And also, we have savings from employee turnover because over time, positions vacate and are typically refilled at a lower step level. And our model has a factor built in for that. So, the net of step and turnover savings is about a 0.25%. So, ongoing COLIS and this impact are about a net of 2.25% increase a year. Health, we're assuming a 3% growth over time and part-time at 2% growth. Vacancy savings, I mentioned, is at 4% going forward, which is less than it's been in recent years. But we're assuming 4% is more reasonable long-term. So, pension costs, at the time this was prepared, we had the 2018 valuation, the 2019 valuation just came out. But we do have built-in the investment return of 4.7% that CalPERS just had for fiscal '20. We assume a better year in fiscal '21 because the years tend to go up and down, alternating. And then on an ongoing basis, we're assuming a lower rate of return, 6.2%. That's the level that Willshire Associates, one of the major advisors to CalPERS, projected for an average over the next decade. The discount rate, we're assuming declines slowly from the current 7% to 6% over the next 20 years. That is not, CalPERS hasn't made a commitment to change that yet, although their intent had been to try to get that down. The discount rate is 7% now. 30 years ago, it was 8.75%. There has been a slow reduction in the average level of return over time, so we think it is prudent to build in and assume discount rate decline. Because of lower investment returns and lower discount rate over time, that is going to add about $2.5 million a year in costs by fiscal '29 compared to ongoing 7% discount rate and investment returns, which is a pretty optimistic assumption. In terms of non-personnel costs, 2.25% is what we have for O&amp;M costs, debt service per the current schedules. Capital grows on the base established in the fiscal '21 budget, except that we we do build in a million dollars for general CIP transfers starting in fiscal twenty two to address some unmet capital needs, certainly not all. Capital has a three percent growth. And then there are a number of transfers out to the WORF, IT, equipment, those all continually two percent growth. The ongoing transfer equal to ten percent of the TOT tax for the Economic Development Trust is assumed to continue. And we will watch the WORF for the need, both for the year just ended and in fiscal twenty one, the need for a higher transfer due to whatever revenue losses they may be incurring. So let's go back to our three cases, the best case, worst case and baseline here in the middle. The shortfall projections are, they're high, sort of regardless of the COVID loss. COVID loss is important, but the reality is, under the best case of COVID losses, we're still looking at an eight point seven million dollar average shortfall compared to the worst case, ten point two average million dollar shortfall. In the middle, nine point four. Now, this shortfall again, you notice this only, only three million dollar shortfall in fiscal twenty one. That is after the furlough and the early retirements. So this is the remaining amount of cuts that need to be made over time. So the question then becomes, what do we need to do in order to balance the budget? In this baseline case in the middle, we have just filled in a, an assumption of twelve million dollars in assumptions phased in over two years. It does take time to develop some of these strategies and so we're assuming all of the savings doesn't come already in, in the year that we're in, but would be spread over this year and next. Twelve million dollars in solutions, which would then be fully implemented by fiscal twenty two, would be ten percent of, of total expense, which is not insignificant. Given that you would have a slow but steady increase in balance by the time you got to fiscal twenty six, you could actually restore four and a half million dollars of the twelve million in cuts and you would be then more or less at the reserve level here on the blue line. Similarly, we did the same thing for best case and worst case. The best case still requires eleven million in solutions phased in over two years. That's about a nine point one percent total cut. And then on the worst case, it would require fourteen million dollars in solutions phased in over two years. And that's an eleven point six million, or I'm sorry, eleven point six percent reduction in expense. In all three cases, by fiscal twenty five or twenty six, you would be able to start restoring some of the cuts. Now, to take a look at these level of cuts in the context of the great recession, you have this upper chart, which shows you how much below the pre-recession general fund spending trend did the city wind up in, as a result of the great recession. And it shows that over a seven year period from fiscal twenty ten to fiscal twenty sixteen, the reductions below what would otherwise have been the case averaged thirteen percent. So under the baseline, we're talking about a, about a ten percent reduction, which is a little less than the thirteen percent average over this period during the great recession. There were a couple of years where it was worse. Fiscal twelve was the worst year, twenty one point eight percent below and fiscal thirteen, seventeen point seven percent below. So what we had done was going back to fiscal two thousand nine, we grew those expenditures at two point seven five percent a year. And it took until fiscal twenty nineteen to catch up with that trend. In all the years in between, the city was lower. Now, city staffing took a big hit. The chart here on the bottom shows general fund employees only. And the peak was five hundred and forty four general fund employees in oh nine. That dropped all the way to three hundred and seventy eight full time COLIS employees, which was a thirty point five percent decline. There has been a gradual increase since then, but even in fiscal twenty one, at four hundred and seventy four FTE, still significantly below the pre-recession peak. There had been, back then, also some revenue gains. The city enacted some land leases with the utilities that brought money into the general fund and then there were also rate increases for the U E T and the TOT. The situation we look at now is the revenue options are more limited. There is still a quarter percent potential for local sales tax, but of course, if anything were to appear on the November ballot, it would probably be facing economic headwinds. Even on the March twenty twenty ballot, only sixty eight percent of general tax measures passed versus ninety four percent of general tax measures passing on the November of twenty nineteen ballot. So as a result, a lot of what our attention has been focused on is reductions in spending. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Toller, who's going to walk through the research comparing to other cities and, and also a list of budget strategies.
Great. Thanks, Bob. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You know, one of the areas that we looked at was really, you know, how does, how does Santa Cruz line up with respect to other agencies? And we took a look at a few different factors with that. One was in the area of, well, Bob just bailed out of it. Would you mind going back on it again?
Minor problems here.
Okay, let's see if I can drive it now.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, there we go. Thanks. Yeah, we, we looked at other agencies that are, you know, full service California cities with a similar population, but that have that mix that you have with respect to being college towns, tourist destinations, or perhaps both. And as Andy mentioned earlier, you know, no two cities are alike. You were clearly unique, you know, with the, the, the community that you have. And so we, we tried to find, you know, some, some agencies that would be of similar. We like to compare two different areas. Number one is what are the revenues that are generated by each of those agencies? Because that speaks to what the general fund resources are to be able to provide services. And the other is really, to what, what extent is the city then investing in staffing to provide those types of services, which over time has, you know, staffing, city staffing has increased in cost for a variety of different reasons, not the least of which is especially where you were situated of trying to, you know, maintain a competitive compensation plan to be able to recruit and retain employees, quality employees to do the work that you are asking to, to be done for the community. And when we look at the revenues, you know, we see that Santa Cruz's general fund revenues in comparison to these other agencies is below that average level. You know, your, your revenue per capita is about sixteen hundred dollars per person per year for the population. And this is just your residential population. It does not include the ebb and flow of daytime population, nor does it include, in this case, the, you know, the student population that you have at UCSC. But the same is true with all these other agencies. We have not incorporated the likes of, you know, UCD over in Davis, SLO down in San Luis Obispo, UCSB, et cetera. And so your revenues are a little less than what some of these other agencies are in terms of what they're, what they're generating. When we also look at the staffing levels, the full time employees that you have serving the entire population, and this is total staffing, not just general fund staffing, you're, you're a little higher than, than the average. Now, in a couple of cases, part of the reason for this is that you do full service water and wastewater services. Most of these other agencies do as well. You have a higher level of treatment that you do. You also maintain, you know, reservoirs and other things that, that some of these other cities might not, but would require additional staffing. But by and large, when you look at staffing, you know, it's, it's a little above what the average is. The other note I want to make here is that, as you may have heard, Monterey, really out the gate in the May-June timeframe, made a decision to do some significant staffing reductions, given what they were expecting in terms of the COVID nineteen pandemic impacts to their, their budget. And so these numbers have been reflected based on what Monterey had, had done. So again, you know, staffing levels are a little higher, but some of that is also attributed to the fact that you are a full service city. You have, you know, made conscious decisions to have city staff provide services that you can, you know, be able to better manage and control the, the outcomes in terms of expected service levels. The other thing that's relatively unique with respect to Santa Cruz compared to these other agencies is also the need that you have, not only being the county seat, but really being the collector of some of the issues that are going on in the community as it relates to homelessness and, 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 you know, some of the, the social issues that are, that are, you're having to face and address even as the city. And in fact, this next chart shows a comparison of homeless population from the latest point in time surveys we were able to access from each of these cities. And this goes back to the, the January two thousand nineteen, which, you know, will be different, of course, than, than what it is today. But back in two thousand nineteen, at that point in time, Santa Cruz's homeless population was larger than any of these other agencies with, by which we have, we have compared to. Santa Barbara is second and then the others fall, you know, to about a third of, of, of your level with San Luis Obispo at about, just shy of about five hundred. And these other agencies, you know, relatively smaller. And you see the breakout between those that are either sheltered, which is the light blue, and the more teal color, which is the unsheltered population. And again, your unsheltered population almost exceeds the total of every other, other, other agency individually. And so there's no question that, that that is having an impact in terms of how you are responding to services. And you see these, you know, percentage of the, you know, what is the percent of Santa Cruz's homeless population compared to the entire homeless population in the county? And again, you're, you're the highest in that area. And then as well as when you look at homeless individuals per one thousand residents, you know, eighteen point two compared to the nearest one is SLO at ten. So it's, it's clearly a, a, an issue that you're having to address as a city and not getting probably as much assistance as, as might be available or expected or hoped for from, from the county or other agencies to be able to assist. And so it, it, it's no wonder that you're having to expend the resources that you are in dealing with those areas and, and all the other things that go along with that. And part of it that also feeds into that is the affordable housing issues that, that we're seeing in, in the greater Bay Area and, you know, along the coastline there between, you know, Santa Cruz and, and Danthur, Monterey. So, so it's clearly, you know, some, some drivers that are driving the way that you're providing at the level and extent that you are providing services. Let me switch over now to talk about how are other agencies addressing the recessionary impacts? There's five areas by and large that there are tools that they're using to be able to address those fiscal impacts that range from making sure that they've got all their ducks in a row, if you will, when it comes to federal reimbursement, you know, accounting for those costs. And those are things, of course, that your finance staff and your, your department heads and then your operating departments are, are doing and tracking those costs, whether they be for the opportunities to be able to leverage exist or additional grant or funding sources, or whether it's just for being able to report back on the, the close to eight hundred thousand dollars of CARES Act money you got through the state in, in that area. You know, there are some budget and accounting actions that agencies will use in terms of either, you know, slowing down or reducing the amount of money they're setting aside for internal service funds like fleet or facilities or information technology costs and other things, looking at the way they're allocating costs for administrative departments, looking at the fees and charges to ensure that they're getting closer to full cost recovery, you know, tapping existing available reserves that are not restricted, that are completely within the governing board, in this case, the council's discretion to, to use, or in the cases of cities that are really in dire situations and dealing with solvency issues, looking at inter fund loans. And that's of course, not, not something that you're, you're at at the present time. Agencies are also reducing and deferring their investment in capital assets until they get some, you know, stability in terms of, of where this recession is going and, and seeing some, some, you know, light at the end of the, at the end of the tunnel. They're also looking at workforce reductions and implementing things that relate, that in a range from hiring freezes, something that you're doing for this one year in two thousand twenty one, eliminating vacant positions, temporary furloughs and layoffs. Temporary furloughs are something that you're doing right now, you know, and some agencies are also reopening bargaining agreements, you know, and with, with, with agencies to be able to work together with, with, with labor and staff and in terms of addressing the issues. And then finally, our other operational reductions, you know, range from recreation programs, closing non-essential facilities, reducing work week for administration. So there's some different tools that all agencies are using and these are, you know, tools that, that your staff have already considered. And in some cases, as I mentioned, as I was talking about this, have already started to implement at least on a temporary basis until which time you figure out what the magnitude of the problem is, which Bob just shared, and what other strategies might be available. And so as we started looking at different strategies that could be used for consideration, we, we like to think of it in terms of, of really fiscal sustainability planning. How can the agency create a sustainable community as it relates to the fiscal side, the, the resources that you have that are, that are available? And really, it's this concept of being able to ensure that you, you can make good on the obligations that you have and providing the, the services that you're able to provide within the community, given the resources that you have. And they, the strategies that we typically identify are in two large buckets. They're either trying to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible. And if the sum of those, of, of those solutions aren't able to maintain service levels, then it's looking at reduced services. And the areas of maintaining service levels include expenditure controls and, and cost shifts, which are just basically words for how, how do you, how do you squeeze a nickel a little bit better in terms of the, the cost of providing services? Service delivery alternatives would, would mean shared service opportunities that may exist, whether it be in consolidating services with other agencies like parks maintenance or fire or police or other things, or, you know, either outsourcing or insourcing, depending on if you have capacity to be able to insource services from other agencies that are likewise also hurting financially, that are, that are within the same geographic region. And the other area, of course, it looks to maintain service levels and to provide the resources that are necessary to provide service levels at that, at that, at that level, is the area of revenue enhancements. And whether that be, you know, tax increases, increasing the base, the economic development activities, increasing fees to be able to ensure that, that the, the delivery of services are being paid for at, at an appropriate price for providing those services. And again, to the extent that those three areas do not provide that fiscal sustainability to you long term, then you're going to have to look at service level reductions. And that's how we evaluated the different strategies that we, we identified. We looked at various factors such as, you know, the, the potential for the community that, that, you know, may, may not, may not support a certain strategy to push back, you know, technical or operational difficulties for implementation. Can you implement it in a timely fashion? And what is the level of disruption on both service delivery as well as, you know, the city organization itself? And when we compare that to the fiscal impact, when you're looking at the need to find strategies that will equate to twelve million dollars per year, starting in fiscal twenty one, we had to scope this at a certain level. And so there might be some strategies that are out there that might, you know, be able to save some money, that might be able to reduce costs or, or, you know, generate additional revenues. But we tried to focus on those items that were potentially more big ticket, those items that are really over about the five hundred thousand dollar level. And so that's what, what you're seeing in terms of the different strategies. And so that's what, what you're seeing in terms of the different strategies that we identified. And when you compare that then to the level of difficulty of implementation then, you realize what are the areas where, where we can see that high fiscal impact, um, and, and the minimal difficulty? Those are the areas that are the, the, um, I wouldn't say no brainers, but those are the ones that are, um, have, have more opportunity for success than those that would generate less than $500,000 and would require a significant amount of, uh, of lifting to get there. So, so we, we considered that in, in terms of the strategies that we've, we've identified. And it's something that, that you, um, as a city council and staff are going to have to think about in terms of a, a potential, you know, rubric, if you will, or a, um, a quadrant analysis to help you in identifying what the appropriate strategies are as you, as you move forward. So let me get into the strategies. The first slate of strategies that I'd like to talk about are those that, um, are trying to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible. Now, before I go into each of the strategies, and I'm only going to give a broad brush stroke, top level, perhaps one sentence of, of what each of these are, um, is that all of these, you know, the, all the estimates that we've identified as a result of this, um, were, were not, um, as a result of detailed, um, um, analysis on, on, on our part. That wasn't really what, what the focus of this was. Instead, it was more of identifying those strategies with reasonable potential fiscal impact that could be, um, brought forward for, for consideration. Some of them have a little bit more cau-, um, 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 precision in terms of what the, uh, the numbers are, but, uh, than, than others. And in some cases, the others are going to be defined about how you actually define what that strategy is and how it will be implemented based on your expectations for service levels, the need to get to the $12 million that Bob indicated in, in terms of the model, um, and, and how operationally they can be enacted. So with that kind of as a background, let me just quickly go through what, what each of the strategies were. And again, we've sorted these into the four categories that you saw a few slides earlier. The first area is in the area of revenue enhancements. One of the options could be to increase the hotel tax or the transient occupancy tax rate. You're currently at 11%. If that were to go up to, example, 14%, that could generate an additional $3 million on, on long-term, um, for the city. The second is raising the local sales tax rate from the current half cent and replacing it with a three-quarter cent sales tax, increasing it by one quarter percent. And for Santa Cruz, that would increase an additional $3.6 million of revenues, um, for the city to be able to, um, to pay for the services that it provides. There's the third concept of implementing a parcel tax. Now, this could look like a whole bunch of different, um, options. One could be a parcel tax that, that is related to landscaping and lighting, called landscaping and lighting district. Another could be a parcel tax that relates to perhaps, um, dealing with, you know, parks maintenance, uh, uh, activities, um, you know, community benefit, um, um, issues that may be coming up. Another that is, uh, being, um, reviewed and tested by a variety of different cities across the United States and even in Canada, is this concept of a vacancy tax that there's an impairment that's, that's going on in the community for parcels to be left vacant. And there is the ability to implement a tax in that area. So there's a whole bunch of different options there. We estimate that depending, again, on how you size this, um, and, and what the totality of parcels would be that would be incorporated in that, that could range up to about a $2 million, um, impact for, for the city. The fourth area is looking at your parking meter fees, um, and there would, could be the potential to increase up to about $750,000 for that. And the fifth area is also fees and charges, um, in terms of ensuring that you're, um, recovering costs to the fullest extent possible in the areas, especially, uh, public works and development services. And that's what the focus is on these two, where there are transactional, um, businesses going on between a, either developer, property owner, customer, and, and the, and the city. And, um, and so therefore, there typically is a view by city that, well, okay, those should be reimbursed, um, to the cost recovery, um, to up to the cost recovery level. And so that's what the potential is for, for those areas. Let me shift over to the right-hand side, come back to the left. The second area is in the area of expenditure controls and cost shifts. And again, this is the concept of being able to, um, reduce expenses but still provide the same level of service. Um, the, the first area is in, um, deferring, you know, cost of living adjustments, um, for employee groups, um, for one year. That has the impact of, of about a million and a half dollars. Um, and, and to clarify that, by, um, by having that cost of living, which right now is built into the model, assuming that it goes up, by virtue of deferring that for one year, it has an ongoing fiscal, um, impact in the model. And so that's what that strategy is about. It's not assuming that cost of living adjustments are deferred forever and ever. It's just the one-year impact of, of, of that, um, being implemented. The second is in the area of cost sharing, things that you've done in the past, but additional cost sharing of either pension or healthcare costs is another option. Conducting a citywide organizational assessment is this, uh, item number eight, which would be looking at the organizational structure and the way that services are delivered citywide, um, that could, and based on our experience in doing a lot of those types of studies, could yield savings as, as much as a million dollars, some of which might be as a result of some other strategies that might be, um, identified here. But, um, but in, in, in and of itself, doing an organizational assessment, given the size and the nature of the services that you're providing, have the ability to, to generate that type of savings. There's the option of freezing either merit or step increases, um, for staff for a, either a short or a long period of time. If it was done just for, again, a, a, a one-year, um, um, option, um, that would then start up again in the following year, it has the potential of, of saving, um, $800,000 because it's reduced that, um, that growth in that one year. Stopping the tran-, but right now, you're transferring a certain portion of your transient occupancy taxes to, um, your economic development trust. You could suspend or stop that transfer for a short period of time. Remember, as Bob indicated, that, um, starting in fiscal '21, you need to find about $12 million in, in budget solutions to be able to, um, resolve the gap and restore reserves, um, up to the prudent levels that, that would be required. But you could end up restoring about $4.5 million, starting in '26. So this could be one item, for example, that could be a short term if it was, um, identified as well as all these could be. Item 11 is introducing options for additional retirement incentives, um, that would give you the opportunity to be able to, um, to leverage those positions that would become vacant and freeze those, um, or, um, eliminate those, depending on the operational, um, needs now and in the future and how much resources you have. Another area that could be done is, is this concept of number 12, which is shifting police and how police services are provided from sworn officer positions to non-sworn officer positions. And again, something like this could be done in conjunction with, with, you know, strategy 11 or some other strategies, perhaps. And it, it, it gives that, that o- opportunity to be able to address some of the issues that you're dealing with in a different way, perhaps using community service officers rather than, than, than police officers. And the, the reason that that shift ends up saving money is because of the, um, the, uh, benefit costs are, are lower for non-sworn, um, positions as they are for sworn. And so this is kind of under the umbrella, being able to look at, you know, reimagining how police services are provided, perhaps. I mean, we've come up, we've included a conservative estimate about what that could mean, depending on the extent. The area of service delivery changes, items 13 and 14, um, really relate to how you're handling some of your, um, risk management issues. Right now, you're doing those in-house with staff. And so this would be the concept of either, um, outsourcing and, and entering into a, um, an insurance risk pool, um, for some of the administration of liability insurance, as well as workers' compensation, um, and how you're handling the administration of that. So those will be opportunities for some service delivery changes there. Again, concepts here with all of these strategies, these 14 strategies, is trying to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible. And to the extent that the, the sum of those are either not selected or not able to be implemented, or don't give you the fiscal impact that was hoped for originally, then you're going to have to look at reducing service levels. And there's, um, there's, you know, a variety of different strategies that could be looked at here. And, you know, one, one of the questions that we tend to get is that, well, you know, some agencies just say, well, okay, we're looking at 10%, let's just do 10% across the board. And that's an option. That's an option for the city to, to implement. And so we, we looked rather at, at where, where are there opportunities, perhaps, to, um, look at, at the types of services that you're providing? And where might there be opportunities to be able to, um, in a more strategic fashion, I guess, uh, reduce, um, reduce some of those? The first area is, um, um, reducing services, you know, across multiple general fund departments. Instead of the 10%, you know, across the board, instead, this one would look at being able to eliminate half of your currently vacant positions. That way, it does not have an impact on any existing staff, which is something that's important, you know, from, um, an employee morale perspective. And so, um, the sum of, of all of those positions, um, you know, um, equates to about $8 million per year. And so looking at half of that would be just shy of that, um, as an opportunity. The, the second area is in the area of recreation program subsidies. Right now, the general fund is, is subsidizing a lot of recreation programs. And that's typical of, of, of various agencies, um, to try to allow for maximum participation in the community, to be able to live, work, and play feature, right, in terms of the, of the community. Those recreation, recreation programs come at a cost. And so this concept here is to look, to strive to reduce the, the subsidy that the general fund is, is, um, making towards those recreation programs. And so that could either be done in the area of making the programs more cost-effective, retooling the programs, looking at, at different ways to provide that service at a, at a lower cost, or looking at, and/or looking at the, the cost recovery of what, you know, the fees are that you're charging for those classes or programs, um, and increasing those, um, to a certain level. Or even also looking at, you know, recreation programs, again, in light of service level reductions, um, that are not, um, that are, that are not achieving that full cost recovery, or maybe very far from that, um, and may not have, um, a lot of draw in terms of number of, of folks that are, that are providing those, that are, I'm taking you up on those programs. And so it, it could be a, a, a combination of a whole bunch of things. It doesn't just assume that you're just eliminating recreation programs, but it, it's really looking more at how can the general fund reduce the subsidy that it's paying for recreation programs? And we've evaluated that based on the current draw that you have. You know, if you just took, curved that up by about 30 or 40%, that would get you about the 1.5 million. Reducing funding for social service programs is another option. You're currently, um, spending a, a, a million dollars towards, um, helping to fund social service programs. And that is something that some cities are, are not doing. Some cities are doing at a lower, um, extent. So there, there is the potential there that would have an impact, of course. All of these will have impacts in terms of the services that are provided within the community, whether the city is providing them itself, or whether they're being done through the, the, the resources that you're providing to see those services being provided. The, the next area, item 18, is reducing service, the, the service delivery capacity in your management and analytical, um, areas, um, within the organization. And so that would be, you know, in terms of, um, perhaps changing the span of control and changing the level of, 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 of management that you have within the organization, or even, um, the, the analytical support that, you know, your different, um, um, departmental operations rely upon, um, for research and analysis or whatnot. So that, that has a, a potential dollar impact there of, of, of about $2 million, just over that. The area 19, um, you know, Santa Cruz, for a variety of different reasons, not the least of which is that you had a thriving redevelopment agency before the state took it away from all of us, right? Is, is, you, you still have a very, um, um, a, a, a very, a well-staffed, um, economic development area. And that's reflective of, of you, the investment that you've been putting in that. But I want to make sure that it's not just understood as economic development. Because the economic development department oversees a variety of initiatives, including, including your housing program, property asset management, your arts programs, um, and also, you know, finishing the, the administration of the, this disbursement agency and all the programs that are in there until it's finally able to be, um, completely dissolved and all of its enforceable obligations are done. And so if, if, if this strategy were implemented, it would have an impact on all of those different types of services. And that's been valued at, at just over a million dollars as the potential, again, depending on, on the direction that, that you would want to go and what you would want to invest in. Finally, is in the area of, of park maintenance standards, um, which I know has been tough, especially given the fact of the, um, regional draw that you are. And since people can't travel, they're pounding the beach right now, right? And so, um, reducing park maintenance standards would be an opportunity to be able to, um, to, to, to look at really reducing the, um, the level of effort that you're doing in terms of, um, maintenance, whether that be weeding, mow and blow, um, you know, um, um, deferring perhaps some, some, um, you know, capital maintenance that you might need to do in, in different parks. Again, all of these come at a, uh, at a, at a cost in terms of, um, reducing service levels. But the city will need to think about those as a plan B if some of the other options that are exercised are, are not wanting to move forward there. So the total of what we've identified is about $29 million. Your target is about $12 million. And again, remember that it's not just on the cut side. There's also the potential for revenue enhancements. But those might take a little bit of time to, to get implemented, for not the least of which is that as we go through this recession, um, the city is going to have to evaluate what the likelihood is of, of being able to move forward with, uh, different revenue enhancement opportunities, um, and the appetite for the community to be able to support those. So next steps, and then we'll turn it back over to, uh, to staff. And if you have any questions for us, is, you know, today, we, we wanted to present the forecast to you, um, and also the members of the public that may be watching this, um, and potential strategies, you know, at, at this session. Now, it's going to be, um, you know, you providing direction, um, to staff to be able to develop the, the more detailed, you know, plan in terms of how the different solutions that you want to, um, um, pursue, um, could be implemented. And that will be presented to you for, for your consideration. And then ultimately, um, you would have to, um, approve those, um, for implementation. And, um, you know, you and the staff will have to then implement those, those strategies. So with that, that concludes our presentation. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'll turn it back over to you, um, and we're available to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. I think it might be good next if councilors could hold their questions. We, we have just a few slides of, uh, some recommendations that have come from the subcommittee. And so I'm going to turn it over to Laura to just briefly show those recommendations based on the conversations that we've been having, and then we can, uh, return to council for further questions.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Laura Schmidt, your Assistant City Manager. And as, uh, the mayor alluded to, the Budget Committee has been working over the last, uh, couple of, few days on going through Management Partners' high-level recommendations and presenting for you a summary of, uh, potential focus areas that they were most interested in. So that's what the next few slides represent. The first one is regarding the revenue enhancements. And in the brackets, the number references the Management Partners', uh, budget strategy recommendation. So the ones that the Budget Committee was most interested in were sales tax, parcel tax, and, um, they talked about various options underneath that. And then specifically, uh, related to parcel taxes is the vacancy tax. The other item that they were interested in was fuller cost recovery recommendation, uh, number five for public works and development services. And then number four, parking fees, but in limited areas. And then the final one, which was not on the budget strategy, was from Management Partners, is to reinvigorate the look at Sky selling Sky Park in Scott Valley. And this is, the sale has been considered and authorized previously by council. So any members of the Budget Committee have any comments on the revenue enhancements? All right, I'm going to move on. In the expenditure control, cost shifts and the service delivery change areas under Management Partners', budget strategies, um, one of them was liability insurance and workers' compensation, service delivery changes. So that combines items number 13 and 14 from the recommendations. That one was interesting for the subcommittee. The other one is the citywide organizational assessment. And, uh, a corollary to that was exploring regional shared services for certain areas. So that was number eight. And then additional retirement incentives, possibly putting out a new package for employees that didn't take advantage of the fiscal year 2021 package that was offered. And then Santa Cruz Police Department sworn to non-sworn transition of some of the positions. And then funding of the Economic Development Trust, slowing it down for a limited number of years and specifying- of years and specifying the number of years that we would do that. And then the final area of interest was potentially freezing merit increases. Are any council member, Budget Committee, comments on this one?
I just, maybe for a point of clarification on the ED trust, I believe, Laura, that we confirmed that that slowdown would not, would not, would not affect some of the current projects, current housing projects we have on the books. I believe we discussed that yesterday, but I just want to double check.
Correct. Yes, we would definitely need to coordinate with this, with the Economic Development Department as far as making sure that what is existing in the trust would cover the projects in the pipeline.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the reducing service, yes.
No, I'm good. It was about ED too, as well. Don, I got it, thanks.
Thank you. On the reducing service level area, so this was the second of the budget strategy slide that you just saw from Management Partners, managed, conducting a managed process to reduce service levels. And underneath this umbrella would be items number 15 and 18, to potentially eliminate funding of vacancies for operationally sustainable. So we are carrying numerous vacancies on our books, and those vacancies translate to budget. And when we eliminate a vacancy, the budget gets reduced. So we would potentially look at some of those vacancies. Management Partners' strategy had said up to 50% of possibly eliminating some of those where it's operationally feasible. Reduce management and analytical capacity was item number 18. And then looking at the viability of reducing economic development, housing, property asset management, arts and successor agency programs was number 19. And then parks and recreation, doing a fee analysis but mitigating program impacts. So that was number 16. Council members on the Budget Committee wanted to look at potentially the fee recovery and going to more of a fuller cost recovery model, but was, they were not overly interested in reducing the recreation program levels themselves. Any council member, Budget Committee comment on those? Great.
Yeah, actually, I do have one, if I could. It's more of just a comment related to service level reduction. So we were very clear that, I mean, I think we were clear in the conversation, and I'm pretty sure that there's a consensus on the desire to, you know, make cuts that are furthest from service delivery that people rely on regularly in our town. And so in, with respect to the Parks and Rec programs, it reminded me, with respect to Parks and Rec programming, we, you know, it's clear that there are a lot of vacancies there and that that is affecting service level already. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's an area, I think, of concern, certainly for me, many of the people who are communicating with the city council right now. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight that, that it is, it's something that, you know, I believe should be treated a little bit differently as we're making those decisions moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. As far as the next steps, just wanted to reiterate what Steve had talked about, where we are in the process. Today, we're presenting the potential, the actual forecast from Management Partners and the potential strategies and recommendations from them. I just gave you a summary of the Budget Committee's focus areas that they were interested in out of those strategies with the addition of the Sky Park potential sale. So that's what's happening today. Based upon the conversation amongst you and the community today, we'll get better idea of which focus areas you are most interested in, and we'll take that and work with staff offline in departments to put together actual budget packages for implementation. And then those budget packages for implementation will come back to council in the second meeting in September for your actual feedback and vote for which ones we would actually implement. So that's what we're looking at in the next month. With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Laura. So at this time, are there any council members with questions for Management Partners or any questions they'd like to address for direct to the subcommittee regarding recommendations? And I should consider it, Councilmember Golda.
I have a few questions. So it was, this one's for Management Partners. On slide 24, what were the social services you were talking about? The $1 million?
This is the $1 million funding that is in the city administration, it might be in the city council budget, that funds nonprofit social service agencies. So there's a total of a million dollars, just over a million dollars that's funded for those agencies.
Okay. Councilmember Golda, this is Laura. There's actually about $1.96 million that's funded across our core investment program as well as homelessness, mental health liaison, downtown outreach worker, and hopes. So it's actually 1.96 million and change. And I think the recommendation on the budget strategy was to cut that in half.
Yeah, thank you, Laura, sorry.
Thank you, welcome. And then the other, one of the other questions ahead was, can somebody tell me more, like, what's the vacancy tax looks like across the country or Canada where, where people are currently, of the strategy?
Yeah, let me, let me give you at least the benefit of what we've currently found thus far. You know, it's interesting, in some regards, in 2017, Vancouver, British Columbia, implemented a vacancy tax because they were dealing with some significant blight issues for property that was not, that was just, you know, being left and not being vacated. And so they implemented one that's based on an assessed value. Now, you can't do that in California, clearly. There are other agencies that, Washington DC and some other agencies across the United States have looked at that. The city of Oakland has implemented a program, I'll need to pull up the details of what they provided. They have 10 different exemptions, I know that they've included in there, such as, you know, properties that are by low-income seniors, owned by low-income seniors, low-income or very low-income owners, you know, properties that are in process of being developed, et cetera. But they have implemented a fee that is exacted on those properties for which there is nothing that is developed on it, and it's just sitting vacated. I believe they also have a different level when it comes to blighted property. City of Berkeley was looking at moving forward with a measure in this election, but as of our understanding yesterday and trying to reach out to them, they have decided to not move forward with that, at least with the staff that we spoke with. So this is kind of an evolving issue that's coming up. Andy, I don't know if you wanted to add anything further with respect to some of the things you're seeing?
Well, just that the, that the public policy premise behind these, at least in the Oakland case, is that housing should be used, it should be occupied, and they want to create an incentive for that occupancy.
So, and I was, I was hearing one thing kind of about vacant land or nuisance-type properties, and then another thing, so is this commercial and residential, or just every property?
In Oakland, it's both. And that's probably the best data point that we have so far in this, because it's a California city. And so there's, there's a couple of interests that, public policy interests. One is, of course, the maintenance and cleanup of any blighted vacant properties. And secondly, occupancy, encouraging occupancy of housing units.
Yeah, I've got a little more data on Oakland, if you wanted more specifics on that, would that be helpful?
I'd be interested to find out, yes.
It, so it was in 2018 when they passed that vacant property tax act. Homes that are in use fewer than 50 days a year would be subject to the tax, and it's a $6,000 flat fee. It's, as Andy indicated, it's for condo, duplex units, ground floor, commercial space. Those are $3,000 a year, but $6,000 for any other, any other property. I mentioned some of the biggest, I'm sorry. I mentioned some of the, you know, big exemptions that they had in there. Also, they exempted nonprofit organizations and, you know, those that are going through the entitlement process. If there are owners that are, you know, suffering a financial hardship, and that opens up a whole Pandora's box in terms of providing that information in a public setting to the city, or they have, you know, demonstrable hardship could be there as an exemption. So that's kind of what, what they've, they've found in Oakland, what they're doing.
Thank you, that helps me understand a lot better.
Councilmember Matthews, and then Councilmember Watkins.
Mayor, I just wanted to let the rest of the council members know as well that the Budget Committee did ask Finance to do additional research on the vacancy tax. So somebody from Finance is working with Management Partners as well as doing additional research to be able to get you the information.
Thanks. And I guess I'll just add to that, that I think even exploring the vacancy tax, a lot of it is, you know, assessing how it could be implemented in our community. So even as we move considering different tax measures, kind of understanding what that would look like in Santa Cruz is something that, some work still needs to be done on that. But given that it's been used in other cities, that's why I've had a couple of conversations to explore it and around the potential for implementation here in Santa Cruz.
Mayor, if I can just add, and then with respect to any decision around the tax measure, are there other considerations that will have to be taken into account? And a process for that, we'll have to do some polling, get a sense of how the community feels about it. And also, you have to sort of weigh the different tax options in terms of their revenue impact and timing amongst other factors to decide really which one to move forward with and at what time. And also, there has to be a certain amount of public outreach to get a sense of support and that sort of thing. So there's a process that we'd have to embark to make a final decision. And it would have to be made to be placed on the march, it'd be by January, or April. So there's not a whole lot of time, but.
I think, yeah, that's why today, I think, is, you know, being able to provide some direction can kind of help us move down that path of, if we're going to explore it, there's a lot of work that will, backend work that will need to be done to understand what would be the tax measure that would, you know, meet the public, meet the city's needs and, you know, be okay with the public. So, Councilmember Matthews.
Those, those comments are a perfect segue to my concern, which was had the timing of these various options, when they would actually kick in and, and help out our situation. The tax measures particularly, obviously, there's a process. And I suppose a special election could be called for some types of taxes. I know we have done that in the past during economic crisis. But, you know, even playing it out, if the recommendations come back to us in late August, late September, any kind of a campaign like this is going to take a number of months, et cetera, et cetera. So it's really, it's almost a year-two solution rather than a current-year solution. So I think we just have to keep all of these things in mind. Some of them could be more administratively implemented and kick in, whatever the timeframe is, 30 days, whatever. But the tax measures, although they're high ticket and maybe useful in the longer term, are not going to be the big solution for the fiscal year that we're in. That's, and then I just think that's another part of the grid as we look, we, you committee look over this, is when would that, what's the timeframe that that could actually go into effect? That's just my comment on all of these. And I did have one question. What is parking fees in limited areas? What did that mean? It's, on revenue enhancements, it's on page two, it's checked as number four.
I think the idea there was trying to, to increase parking fees in such a way that it wouldn't.
Increase, increase parking fees.
Increase parking fees, but in such a way that it wouldn't impact some of the local neighborhoods or residential areas, I think was the, was the concern.
That's all I have for now.
Councilmember Watkins, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. I have, I have one question just for clarity for maybe our presenters. In terms of the PowerPoint, there was, under the general economy, that we are expecting to see, obviously, empty office spaces, and then, and then it says suburbs will recreate, regain daytime population. Can you say a little bit more about what that is in terms of how it relates to Santa Cruz?
Sure. What a lot of communities are finding is that people that used to commute into office space in a large urban area are now working from home. And so sometimes that home is in the city itself, other times it's in more of a suburban location. So there's a lot, been a lot of discussion about sort of the collateral damage of people not working in the office space, where traditionally in downtown areas, you've got this dense daytime population of people who came in, and now a lot of them aren't there. A lot of the essential jobs are more distributed, they're not so much in large office buildings, they're in individual businesses or industrial types of sites. And people are still showing up to work there, but it's the downtown areas and the associated restaurants and other services that got used to serving that population. That's what's really in a state of flux. For Santa Cruz, you're a little bit in the middle there. You're not a huge urban area, but you are a regional center. So to some extent, that will probably be relevant, but there are also a lot of people who live in Santa Cruz that may have commuted into San Jose. So in that case, some of your people are staying home.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarity. I have another, I mean, I think some of what we're seeing is sort of an acceleration of our capacity underway in regards to certain commercial uses not being same and online purchasing. So it just feels like a little bit more accelerated. We also have known that there's going to be more optimization of different types of jobs, and has that been incorporated into your studies at all?
Well, I don't, there are crystal ball in terms of AI and automation isn't that good, but it's clearly a trend. And one of the things we're finding from this whole pandemic is that it's taking trends that were already in motion and it's accelerating them. So you're going to see some places that, you know, when they staff up, it may not be staffing up with humans, it may be staffing up with, you know, robots or automation of other sorts. So that's too fine a detail to try and build into a forecast, but what you say is clearly a trend.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting to think about if we can try to have some foresight into what has been kind of predicted along the way. And even if, you know, general staffing services we provided with different taxes we sort of talked about last time with the utilities and, I mean, how are we being mindful of these existing trends that are already underway? And I guess my last would be just some suggestions maybe for the committee, if that's okay? And I think for one, I appreciate data, and I know that you had some organizational study as some of the options. I'd like to understand kind of what that could look like personally. I feel like we see within your presentation, the portion of those experiencing homelessness in our city. I don't know what the financial, like, it'd be interesting to see if there's a financial study to understand better the financial costs associated with our city as a place for that. I also know that we've talked a little bit about, and you had in your presentation around the cannabis revenues. We had talked in the past, sort of delicately thinking about how to do a market study on that. So it'd be interesting to see how we, as a community, are thinking about that as a potential revenue source as well, or what makes sense in terms of our market. And then, I guess I have two last questions, which is, you mentioned that. you mentioned that our Economic Development Department stands out. And I'm wondering, what does that look like in terms of the services other jurisdictions provide?
Yeah, and I'll, if Andy wants to chime in with that as well. But, you know, every agency handles economic development a little differently. Some agencies tuck it in as a part of their community development, you know, department. Some can, you know, tuck it in as part of the city manager's office. You know, it does depend on the unique circumstances for each of the agencies. You know, you have a good number of staff that are dedicated to housing issues. Totally get that of what you're dealing with there. You know, other agencies look to partner with nonprofit organizations in terms of dealing with some of their housing issues and really, you know, outsource that. The other area that we see other agencies doing is looking at working with property managers to do property management for any properties that they're still holding and deciding to, you know, hold and lease. And, you know, clearly, they're valuable properties. But the question is, you know, to what extent are you able to still make sure that you're proactively managing those properties and being there for the tenants that are in there, but doing it in a cost-effective way? And some agencies have decided that they want to have, you know, private, you know, enterprise doing that as opposed to city staff. The thing that we've had that's a hard time for cities is just the rising cost of employment to, you know, be able to have our employees, whether it be healthcare costs or, you know, pension costs and other things like that. And so that's always something that's going to have to be evaluated. Andy, do you have any other further comments of what you're seeing?
No, I think you've covered it well. And it's something that needs further study. We're just suggesting that it's an area that is worthy of some analysis.
Oh, I appreciate that. And then I guess I have just maybe a couple more kind of questions or thoughts. One is around, like, definitely trying to get as much information and data as possible so we can make kind of those informed decisions. And then if there is this conversation around recovery for, for example, like the Parks and Recreation Programming, that we can also look at how we could add to our scholarship potential funding so that way, if you can afford to pay for full recovery for your participation, how can we also cover the costs for those who can't? And I think that would be a nice way to kind of balance the potential impact that that could have on our lower socioeconomic students or families in our community, but still being able to have them access our programming even if the costs are higher. So just sort of a potential solution there. I know we have some funding to.
No, that type of means-based programming is definitely a best practice. And it's something that could improve your revenues as well.
No, I appreciate that. And I think we don't want to not have our, you, you know, I think every youth should be able to participate in Parks and Rec. And that shouldn't be determined by your family's financial status. And so if you pay for it, you know, great. And personally, as long as I can, I will. But those who can't, I feel we can have an opportunity to use some of the set aside funding that we have with our children, some potentially, or expand that to make sure we can cover those costs. I guess the last sort of thought I have was just around what the subcommittee was thinking about in terms of this kind of getting more information and then also around community engagement. Or maybe, Martin, if you want to speak to those topics as organizationally. Oh, you didn't.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again? The.
Yeah, sure. I think, you know, I was wondering if you have any insights in terms of how you're planning to use data and kind of get more information in terms of studies, but also if you also have an outreach strategy around community engagement?
Yeah, with respect to the budget strategies or just in general, in terms of the community engagement? Because I think that, well, one of the things that. Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, budget strategies, doesn't relate to the coverage.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, that is going to be a critical piece of this in multiple ways, you know, certainly internally to employees. That's an area. We're doing webinars now informing employees, you know, in advance. Also, we have to work with the bargaining units. So there's a lot of internal work that has to happen as we move forward with developing these recommendations and actions that will come from council. And it has to happen pretty quickly because we don't have a lot of time to take these actions, particularly the first set of cuts. And as you know, these are the more difficult ones because they can't involve the revenue ones and some of the ones that take longer time. So they tend to be more painful. And also, there are the ones that probably may relate to more service-related impacts. And we're seeing some of that already. I mean, some of our parks already, they're seeing some of the closures there and some of the impacts there. So I think informing the community is a critical piece of that. So we do have, you know, Elizabeth now really focusing on this part of it too, working with the Budget Committee to ensure that we communicate to the public. You know, and today was part of that and a reason for doing the study session too, to really, first of all, explain to the community that we have a major issue here that is going to require and have major significant impacts for our community. So we need to be clear about those things. We need to get feedback from the community as we move forward in making some of these decisions. So they can also understand the trade-offs, particularly when it comes to deciding between whether to move forward with revenue measures or not in making that choice. So we do intend on having a robust communications and outreach process as part of this as well. And we're fortunate that we, you know, we've added more capacity in that regard. So we can hopefully do a much better job than we've done in the past. But that has to be a critical piece of what we do as well.
Are you also looking at an organizational study here? What are your thoughts on that, Martin?
You know, we've done some of these in the past. And some of this is inherent in some of these other recommendations. And so I think we're certainly having these discussions with department heads as far as what are some of the organizational aspects or operational considerations that we need to take into account as we look at some of these changes that have to be made. Some of them do require some council direction insofar as policy decisions because they involve, you know, perhaps moving into a contracting arrangement, which historically, we tended not to do that, not to contract out of smes, for example. And others involve, when it involves consolidating services or merging services or doing partnerships, those are a bit more longer term and also have some needs and policy direction and considerations from our jurisdictions and other jurisdictions. So I think, yes, we do need to look at the organization and how we can best do things in order to maintain essential services. And so I think that department heads are having those conversations and will, particularly in the context of what we have to do. Because as you see, it's a long-term issue, it's multiple years. So there are things that we need to do immediately and there are things that we need to be looking at, including, you know, how can the organization sustain what it has over the next few years, not just in the immediate future.
Okay. And then have you, or could you quantify the impact that those experiencing homelessness has had on the city? Or has that come up as a conversation, given that came up in sort of the economic considerations?
Yes. I mean, as was pointed out in the data, you know, Santa Cruz has a very high density and level of homelessness. Our homelessness rate is one of the highest, probably the highest in the state of California at least. It's significant. And the challenge for us is that, quite frankly, with respect to the federal stimulus in particular, and even state funding, it has tended to go primarily to the large cities and the counties. And much of it is intended to address homelessness. And so we're in a difficult position where we have a large impact, but it received virtually very little funding in this regard. And so I think that's why we have been having some conversations. The mayor has scheduled conversations with state legislators and also with our federal legislators with respect to really trying to change that dynamic and recognizing that cities like Santa Cruz, where county seats also have major needs in this area of helping human services. And we need to be considered more like those cities and have higher level of funding. So we have been advocating for that. But I think in addition, quite frankly, we also have to really rely on the county also to be able to assist us in this regard because they are receiving the bulk of funding for these purposes. And they have been doing more of that, they've stood up more shelters. And, but we need to really do more in this area. And particularly in the current environment with the pandemic, where we don't want to spread the disease. And where we have a number of issues that we're facing that are pretty significant. The other one that council is well aware of, that I've communicated with you more recently, is just the level of encampment that we have up in the Pobenip. And we have a major fire hazard right there. And we need to do something about that. And we can't just simply go in there and spread, you know, homeless individuals throughout the county. We haven't made a request to the county, it's because the council knows to provide some assistance there. But so I think we do need, you know, the county to assist us with providing more shelter capacity, even if it's interim, even if it's short-term. They have, and I thank them for that, but much more needs to be done. And the city of Santa Cruz just needs to really have more assistance because it's not a core function of ours either. We don't have dedicated funding for this purpose. So it makes it incredibly difficult for us to be able to respond to it. And even more so when we're having a major budget deficit, of course. So it is a major area of concern. And we need to do a lot more work to really get the assistance and resources that we need to be able to respond to this massive community need.
It'd be helpful, I mean, it'd be helpful or I'd be interested in knowing what that looks like in terms of economic impacts and how you can quantify what that means in terms of services that the city provides, whether it be through law enforcement interactions or fire services deployed or Parks and Rec services. I mean, I know that clearly it's a challenge here, but it'd be interesting to understand what the financial impacts are associated with that so we can just have more information to better understand how.
We actually have done some of that in the past. So I think we can collect some of that, we have some of that data. And I think we can certainly put it together and share it with you. Because it does have a major impact, you know, on our parks, police, fire, fire services, public works. It's really across the board. Even our water agency with respect to our water system. So it's pretty significant and pretty impactful across the board. Yeah, we can put that data together for you.
And then I guess my last question is, in terms of the, kind of the, like, optimization of different positions, I know, we know there's some that are really essential. We heard from our water department really wanting to try to build up our workforce around those types of essential positions that she wants to see created here. Are there other positions that you're seeing, kind of, or your department heads can maybe have some foresight around what that, you know, what that industry is looking like in terms of, maybe not automation, but just other types of efficiencies in terms of the future?
You know, one of the things that's challenging for us, not challenging, but just to me, is that we are a service organization. And to a large extent, that does require, you know, personnel to provide those services. You know, certainly, public safety in particular is one where it really takes people to be able to be responsive to those things. And then the other big part of what we do, where there could be more optimization or more efficiency certainly, is maintaining, you know, infrastructure. Trying to maintain our infrastructure is a significant part of what we do as a basic function. So I think there, we have been doing things there over the years to automate in a way that, you know, is more efficient. And I think we can certainly look at, continue to look at that. For example, even like refuse collection and garbage collection, the way we do it now is much more efficient and automated. And many times, what we've done is to increase, you know, it doesn't necessarily affect employees because we increase what we do. So for example, I have the same number of employees now that we do to collect both garbage and recycling than we had when we were just collecting garbage alone. So I think there are opportunities to do that. You know, somewhat limited because, again, we're not a, we don't provide, you know, indirect services or, you know, ours tend to be the kind that require food services. But in this pandemic environment, you know, we're looking at doing things differently with respect to inspection services, for example. And I think we can do that. And I think we will too, because we are going to have vacancies. And one of the strategies that we have to employ in any case, just to get through this difficult period of time, even if it's not perfect and even if it's not ideal, but maybe it's something interim is to try to employ technology in a way to, you know, kind of preserve those vacancies and those savings so that we can limit the impact to employees and to the services that try to maintain them as much as possible.
Right, right.
And the department heads, I don't know if they're online, but some of them may have some other thoughts if they want to weigh in. I'm happy to let them.
I guess my last, my last kind of comment would be, as we think about some of the, like, closures of parks or other types of reductions, that we look at it through, like, you know, an equity lens. And I was talking to a neighbor who regularly goes to the De La Vega Park and doesn't go into the De La Vega Golf Course. And so who can access different things based on their financial? And how are we thinking about that in terms of closures?
Yeah. Yeah, that one is incredibly painful to me in particular. I mean, because I just went there on Sunday to the, to, sorry, to De La Vega Park to take my granddaughter down to the creek. And, you know, I've been doing that every weekend, just biking down there, playing around in the creek. And this weekend, it was actually too hot to bike, so I drove down there. And it was really heartbreaking when I forgot that it was closed and having to come across the gate that's closed. And while people can still go in the gate, it's not the same thing to have the same level access. And so I don't, you know, I don't think our community, particularly now, parks are particularly of use and important. And so I think we do need to come up with ways to try to sustain the level of, particularly parks and open spaces that we have available for the community. And so that'll be something we'll have to tackle.
Was there thoughts of sort of a rotating closure? So it's not just sort of disproportionately closing one?
No, I would have to ask Tony to talk about that. I think, I think there was consideration with respect to, you know, what the various resources that are available across the park system and how they would be deployed and made available. Because we do have a series of different regional parks that have similar services to De La Vega, such as Harvey West, for example. So I think there were those considerations. And I think if Tony's on the line, I think maybe can add to that, answer that question.
And no problem. We can get back to it.
There is.
Okay.
I'll turn over to Councilmember Brown for your questions.
Thanks. So I, yeah, I have a question. I'm going to make a comment first in response to Councilmember Watkins' question about the cost of homelessness, what the city spends. And I just refer you to the catch, final report included a report. If you don't want, if it's, if you don't find it there, it is there. But if, you can also look at one of our October meetings. We got that report. And it was about $17 million, 90% of which was law enforcement. And I know that's sort of back of the envelope and based on the kind of number of calls for service and. But, and so I do think it's worth trying to dive further into that. But that, just to give you a sense of what that looks like, it was in our last meeting agenda. And my question is, following up on Councilmember Matthews' point about the timing, you know, potential revenue enhancement sources. Obviously, that needs to be considered in our matrix or in our rubric. And I'm just wondering if, because we haven't talked about that in the Budget Committee, if that's a next conversation to, for us to think about the steps to sort of, you know, figuring out how that weighs on our consideration of what cuts we're doing now. So I guess I'm just wondering what the next steps are to make sure we're addressing that as we move forward.
I'll try to answer that. So the next step is, obviously, we need to bring this back to the Budget Committee. And one of the things that we do need to do is engage with pollster to try to look at doing polling and looking at the timing of polling, just to get some sense of, we've done, we did some, but it was pre-pandemic. So I think we need to get some, collect some data on how people feel about various issues, including raising revenues. And then have the committee then look at the various options. There might be a need to, there will be a need to do some outreach as well with stakeholders or potentially impacted factors of the community, depending on what's chosen, and have some discussions there. And then ultimately, I think as Councilmember Matthews pointed out, take all those things into consideration to see if there is the support to, in the data supports, bringing something forward and what the timing would be to do that.
If there's no further questions, I'll turn over to Councilmember Matthews.
In the introductory presentation, there was a review of unemployment stats and they were given for the U.S. and California. And I know they exist for Santa Cruz County at least as well. So I think as these discussions go forward, it'd be good to have those local stats. And the same on lodging vacancy rates as well. Just a couple of observations. The figures on the relative impact of homelessness in Santa Cruz were staggering. I hadn't seen them compared in quite that way recently. And of course, the costs to the community are direct costs that we allocate on contributing to shelter programs. to shelter programs, both facilities and programs, to agencies that provide services. There are the costs of response, which are huge, public safety calls for service, and then there are also costs in economics, as council members know, the impact on tourism and the responses that are received from visitors in response to homeless experiences with the homeless phenomenon. So I just put that out there, the costs break down into different categories, but the sheer volume for the town of our size was larger than I had expected. Regarding economic development, one thing that strikes me is how much we expect out of that department. There was some allusion to it in the presentation, but we have a lot of affordable housing properties, programs, et cetera, that we, existing ones that we oversee, and we are ambitious for what we want to do in the future, and that rests in that department. The oversight of our fiscal properties, there are lots of those, they're pretty complex. I think a lot of the properties that our property maintenance division there oversees are not the sort of thing that you just spin off, it's not like overseeing office leasing or something like that. There are some pretty complicated properties, just to put this all in the, in the mix. And then also bear in mind the importance of that department now as we are facing the biggest recovery, economic recovery challenge in this community memory, I would imagine, living memory. So we've seen what they've been able to do and perform aggressively going after funding sources, and so I just put all that in about what a heavy lift is expected from what appears to be a relatively small department. Also, just in general, as the committee looks at eliminating analysts, and there was another category, job, or trimming, trimming analysts, there again, for many of our programs, our environmental programs, our parks, economic development, we have done very, very well on grants, and grants don't write themselves. And so I think so much of what we've been able to do over the year has been a result of aggressive and successful grant writing. So just a cautionary note there to maintain that capacity when we're going to need it more than ever. Those are just comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. And one thing I also wanted to, actually, I wanted to start with a question as well, because this is something that came up after our budget meeting. My understanding is what we're really like focusing on right now is the six million dollar cut for just this year and not the twelve million for the first two. Is that a correct assumption to make, or are we going to revisit this again, or is it the idea that we kind of focus on what will the twelve million be for the two years? And the reason why I ask is because, you know, after November, we'll have a pretty, we'll have a different sense of, you know, composition of the Senate, who our president's going to be, what type of aid might be coming, depending on who that is. And so, you know, there's a possibility that after November and within the coming months, we might actually see, you know, more funding coming to cities of our size. And so kind of projecting out and making decisions on what, you know, how to solve fiscal constraints in twenty-one, twenty-two, it seems like it's a little, maybe a little premature. So I just wanted to get some clarification on whether we were kind of addressing all twelve million right now or just the six.
What's being recommended, and Steve and Andy, be Phil feeder, jump in, or Bob, is that we do six million in the current fiscal year and then a six million in the next fiscal year. And the reason for that is to sort of cushion the blow over the long term. We don't know what kinds of losses there will be, and, you know, hopefully there will be one, but the longer we delay, the more people it gets. So it's a sort of kind of get a balance of trying to be proactive but not, you know, overdo it, and so it's a, it's a balance of using our reserves and trying to make some act, take some actions that will kind of help us over the long term. And so, and those, you know, tend to be a little bit more challenging kinds of actions because they don't involve explicit revenues, some of the ones that require research analysis. But I don't know if Bob and Steve and Ryan and Wayne as well.
Just let me comment, Martine, I think the mayor raises a really pertinent point. We do not know what sort of federal aid might be forthcoming. We know what was in the package that was passed by the House. That would have been actually quite helpful to local government, but it's been bottled up and hasn't gone anywhere. What we're suggesting is you don't turn an organization like Santa Cruz on a dime, so you have to start planning now. Whenever we work with cities facing any kind of a fiscal challenge, we always emphasize that time is not your friend, because as time grows short, you get pushed into a corner in terms of what you have to do. So what we're advocating would be the six, planning for the six million dollars, obviously see what happens in November, hope we may see some, some targeted federal stimulus, even some needs-based federal stimulus, which we really haven't seen so far. They haven't tied anything to real need or real revenue impacts in, in cities. So we're advocating getting ready, but the point you made is a good one, there could be some good news. We don't want to discount that possibility.
I think in terms of the, the Budget Committee work and the department direction that we're working under and the premise we're working under is we need to find six million dollars in what remains of fiscal year twenty-one. And that is the specific tactical set of objectives we're going after for this fiscal year, because we're not sure what's going to happen at the federal or state level. And I think what Management Partners has also pointed out to us is that we have structural, organizational issues that have to be addressed as far as our operating budget, so working under those premises, that's kind of in the near term what we're going to be focusing on. And then as far as the revenue focus areas that the council would give us direction on, obviously, as Cynthia pointed out, Councilmember Matthews pointed out, those have long lead times. So we'll start focusing on them based upon council direction in fiscal year twenty-one with the realization that the impact and food of that won't happen until twenty-two or beyond.
I really wanted to ask, and thank you for that clarification, because I think that Councilmember Matthews' point earlier, you know, I think the, as the subcommittee that's been looking on this, I think we are looking at kind of, you know, like, what are the things that we can do immediately, what are some of the things that are going to take longer term? And a lot of what we recommended wasn't just to get that twelve million, I think right now what we've done is tried to put a number of different items out there that we think that the community would be okay with, other items as it relates to tax measures, what's worth exploring, but really understanding that there are going to be, you know, we do have to make that, that six million cut now, and so what are the things that we'd be willing to cut in the short term, and then what are some other items that maybe as we start thinking about twenty-one, twenty-two in terms of revenue generation or other areas to consider? I think that that's part of this conversation is really trying to focus on what cuts can we make early, and then what should we kind of consider for later down the line. So thanks for that clarification. I've got Councilmember Matthews and then Vice Mayor Myers.
Yeah, I understand there's no low-hanging fruit at all, but watch the stuff what you reach for. And looking over some of these that popped out to me, that thirteen and fourteen strategies, outsourcing liability insurance admin and workers' comp admin, that's something that, I don't know much more about than I'm reading here, but that seems like something that could be investigated somewhat efficiently. I do remember, and I don't know the timeline, maybe a decade ago or so, the Library Joint Powers Board at the time outsourced its workman's comp administration and ended up, I think maybe they switched providers is what they did, but ended up with better and cheaper service in the end. So, you know, if you just take a fresh look at it. So that's one that seems clearly worth shooting for. You mentioned also at some point, looking again at retirement incentives, et cetera. Those seem like the short-term ones. And I would just say, in reference to the mayor's previous comment, we hope we get the answer in November. Oh my God. And then, you know, it's not till January that they're all torn in, so even that, longer term.
Yeah. To Vice Mayor Myers, and then, and then after Vice Mayor Myers, if there's no further questions or comments, we can open up to the public for public comments.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, the great, great discussion so far. Yeah, I guess the thing that I, that really drew my attention, being a subcommittee member, was obviously the immediate emergency created by COVID-19, but also the structural, the structural deficit that will continue to be there, and I think that that is some of the, borne out in this analysis. I know Martine Bernal had given us sort of those indicators last, the last two fiscal years, but again, I think having the due diligence to make sure that we don't lose track of that structural deficit as well, that's sort of out there in the, in the horizon. My question for Management Partners is on your, sort of on your assumptions around CalPRA, around the pension, you had put in, I'm trying to find my notes, I guess I'm just curious whether or not you think these sort of assumptions that you built in for the pension costs are conservative, are they sort of, I mean, do you feel like these are conservative enough that we, we will be, they're a workable number to shoot through with, with some of the, the items that we need to be thinking about in terms of the structural deficit? I'm just curious.
Well, I think they're realistic. Don Bartel, who's a well-known private actuary, has talked for a number of years about planning for a discount rate of six percent over twenty years, and we have that built in. Welcher Associates, which is one of the main investment advisors to CalPRA's, had a couple of years ago said six point two percent is a reasonable return over time. You may have read very recently that CalPRA's was talking about leveraging their investments in a way to try to mop up their return to where they would have a better chance of hitting seven percent, and there were a lot of concerns raised that that was a potentially risky strategy. Now, for unrelated reasons, it turns out that the, their investment, the head of their investments just resigned, so that's all in a bit of a state of flux. I think it's reasonable to assume a little bit lower level of investment return, because when you look back over the last thirty years, the returns have gradually been coming downhill. It's just harder and harder with the amount of assets they have to, you know, maintain a return, and especially in this current investment environment. So I, I do think it is reasonable, I don't know that it's necessarily conservative, although clearly the discount rate hasn't, they haven't started to reduce it yet, so it's maybe a little conservative in that regard, but I just think it's prudent to not assume the best going forward for, for pension.
I appreciate that, yeah, and I, yeah, I had read some of the recent, recent information about some of the changes there, so I was just curious about making sure that, you know, so I appreciate that analysis and feel like we're in good hands, so thank you.
Okay, are there any further comments from councilmembers, questions? Okay, saying none, I will turn it over to the community for public comment. So if there's any member of the public streaming this meeting who'd like to comment on this item, now's the time to call in, using the instructions on your screen if you haven't already done so. You'll need to press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and once you've been acknowledged, you'll have two minutes to speak to us on this item. So again, if you'd like to speak to us on this item, please call, the number's on your screen. Once you've entered the meeting, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you'll be given two minutes to speak. I'd also like to add too, that if one of the numbers that you try calling doesn't work, please try calling one of the other numbers on your screen.
Yeah, hi, this is Garrett Phillips. I'd like to urge the council to accept the fact that much of this economic shutdown is the fault of the government. There is no time to elaborate, but the government COVID isolation strategy is quite controversial, and there is no assurance anyone's lives will eventually be saved considering the collateral damage consequences of this disastrous strategy. The full extent of responsibility of this partly man-made economic disaster is largely on people like yourselves in every level of government. Clearly, they lack the confidence and the wisdom, the rights of individuals to decide what levels of risk are acceptable to their private situations. The economy, liberty, and pursuit of happiness have been thrown under a bus. When the economy contracts, that is not in itself any justification for raising taxes. That should be thought of as a medieval bloodletting to cure every ailment. You need to provide value for services and not abuse a captive public with unjustified fees and tax increases. You need to justify the extra service salary provided for any tax increase, or you do not deserve it. If you have any good ideas to stimulate or really just free up the private sector economy from government restraint, then that would be a justifiable investment expense. Otherwise, there must be wise cuts. The phrase essential services comes to mind, and cutting non-essential services. Without really picking on anyone in particular, high-salary positions like climate action manager come to mind. It's a good time to become extra efficient in areas where we get very little for our money, especially in an area the city probably shouldn't be funding anyway, or not at this extreme time. It should be known, recent surveys of the national public indicate three to one, they do not favor defunding the police in any major way. I would also remind the council, the previous ad hoc survey showed here, the police got a two hundred and fifty percent higher approval rating than the council itself, and also the fire department had a four hundred percent higher rating. The violent, any police mobs advocating defunding around this country are really only chaos manifesting itself and are the ones needing a defunding real bad. If the California public has taken a fifteen percent cut in employment, then that's not an unthinkable target for city employment cost reductions. There is no free ride. Also, please, no advice from Oakland, gag me.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any member, other member of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item? If so, now is the time to call in. Please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you will be given two minutes to speak. Okay, so this is the last call, if anyone would like to speak to us on this item, now is the time to call in. Please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand, and you'll have two minutes to speak to us on this item. Okay, so you know other members of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item, I'll bring it back to council, Councilmember Myers.
Hi, thank you all, I just got full service on Zoom, so I'm going to backtrack a bit. The, I think a couple of suggestions were the possibilities, so the cola, freezing that, and there's another one, I think the question on both of those. I assume they, reopening bargaining to go forward on those? I assume they, reopening bargaining to go forward on those? Someone just tell me yes or no?
Yes, that requires.
It would require.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And Martine, do we still have a public trust fund? I think it was called a public trust fund, and none of the money could be spent on operations?
Correct.
Is there lots of money? How much money is in it? Do you know offhand?
I believe it's, and Kim might correct me here, but I believe it's around 7 million. And so, but, you know, those are, the way we're looking at it now because of the significance of what we have to draw down, we're including all of that in our, you know, our reserves and some balances.
Right, it is a reserve, and it's a foreign reserve. I just wanted to update on that.
That's right.
I now have just learned about the Economic Development Trust.
Bob, you may have the exact number, I'm not sure.
I might be able to say something. I think one thing that might be worth considering in the subcommittee, this just kind of came to mind, is, you know, based on how we might see ourselves moving forward with the items that we're targeting, it might be worth us kind of breaking these out into different groups, some of which can, you know, be implemented more immediately, those that are going to take more engagement. So, for example, it sounds like, it sounds like, for example, merit increases or anything around the COLA that would require engaging with bargaining groups, which would take more time, and then tax measures would take a substantial amount of time. So, maybe if we can break them into, what are some of the things that we can implement more quickly and those that would take more time will actually help us kind of identify those reductions or cuts that we can make here in the short term versus those that we'll need to consider for a longer term.
So, I got a, I just, really quick, I got a number on the balance for the public trust fund, it's 5 million.
Councilmember Brown, and then Councilmember Matthews.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, Mayor, on your point about working on this in the committee. It's kind of what I was trying to get at with the question about thoughts on how we move forward. So, I think that's going to be kind of a really, really important next task for us, and appreciate you bringing it up.
Councilmember Matthews.
I wanted to raise the question of how we communicate with the commissions on a lot of these. I did think at an earlier council meeting that we invite all the commissioners to watch this budget session. I hope some of them have. But, you know, in the normal scheme of things that we were anticipating, cutbacks to parks programs, or maintenance, or more parking fees, et cetera. I mean, pick your, pick your topic. Very, very often that would go to a commission for, at the very least, review and comment. And I don't have a solution to this, but I think it's going to be important for the committee and staff to communicate and for the department heads, we are not in normal time, and we're not going to take four months to come to a decision. So, it's just a heads up. But I think we do need to communicate with them and let them know perhaps their opinions have to be conveyed directly to council, et cetera. You guys figure it out, but I don't see us going through the normal procedures for a lot of this stuff.
Mayor, as far as the budget committee process and the timing, as you, as the budget committee team members focus on which strategies they would like staff to look at, we'll, on the backside of it, take care of the timing of it. So, if it is a revenue measure that we have to go out and pull for and get on the ballot, we will prorate that into whatever realistically we would see the revenue. Same thing with any of the other adjustments, whether it's the COLA and having to negotiate. HR would assess when those decisions would realistically happen, retirement incentives, all that. So, you guys tell us the strategic focus areas, and then on the backside of it, the departments will translate that into the prorated dollar amounts in any given fiscal year.
Okay, great. Councilmember Matthews, or is that your hand up from earlier?
No, just, no.
So, I guess a question, given the suggestions that came from the subcommittee, and then it seemed like Councilmember Matthews, you brought up the exploring outsourcing for workers' comp, and I think that was the only new one that came through, but I was just wondering if there's other recommendations maybe that council members have for the subcommittee in terms of where we should prioritize our time? Is there anything that we should take off the list, or if there's any other additional categories that you all would like to see us explore with staff? Councilmember Matthews.
That was on the list, actually. I just called it out, but, and I did mention that the retirement incentive, a lot of these that seem more doable in the short time, if there are some opportunities in SCPD to move some foreign to non-foreign positions, look at those. The parking fee increases, again, I don't know what was anticipated. We did raise the neighborhood parking permit fee one or two years ago, 10 bucks. It's still so reasonable. So, there again, just because something wasn't mentioned doesn't mean it's not worth doing. I think the more important thing is what can be done on the shorter timescale and more simply, take maybe a stronger look at those.
Councilmember Watkins, and then Golda.
Yeah, I think I mentioned my comments earlier, but I think if there's even sort of a use of existing studies and/or other studies that can be done to help us have the most information possible about what organizationally makes sense for us, I'm interested in having that data personally. And then also a strategy for, if not in the immediate, but just regular community engagement around input associated with some of these decisions, so the community can have a voice in that. And then, I guess lastly would be clearly looking at some of the revenue enhancements through, you know, polling and information in that way, but also thinking about how we can make some sort of long-term sort of smart advances and through the lens of sort of an equity kind of approach to it. And I can, I mean, if these, I don't know if you're, for immediate, I mean, obviously we have certain immediate things, but as, for example, mentioned around the parks, you know, fees, if we want to have sort of an adjacent approach to that.
Okay. Councilmember Golda.
I have a couple of ideas. One would be like Councilmember Watkins was suggesting to increase fees, but mine would not be specifically like for rec and little, you know, individual activities, but for large group gathering, like renting out some of our venues, looking into that. Another one would, I would suggest, would be looking with economic development about encouraging further like development of other businesses in town, or bringing other businesses to town that could increase our sales tax, like, for example, like Apple Store, something like that, that would be a big draw, and not with our local businesses either. And then the third thing I would suggest is just taking a very, not that I'm advocating for anyone to get laid off, but taking a very close look at every department, and maybe talking with department heads about positions that are no longer needed or not needed during this time, and then could potentially be scaled back or even eliminated because they're not, haven't been being used for the last, you know, six months, and maybe won't be used for the next, whatever. So, those are my suggestions. Thank you.
And to add on to what you said, and I think what Councilmember Watkins just said, I think some of these opportunities for new businesses, maybe that can be addressed as well in the recovery committee as we're kind of thinking about now that these spaces are vacant, and given that we saw a decline in retail before this, and now we're going to see an even steeper decline, you know, what should we as a community be thinking about in terms of what businesses can come in and not only be sustainable, but, you know, will be able to, you know, help contribute to our tax base for the longer term? So, appreciate those comments. Any further questions or comments from council members or staff? Councilmember Matthews.
Yeah, you know, going forward, as we communicate to the public, I, maybe this will be the work for Elizabeth and you, Mayor, but really framing it, we are, we are in an extraordinary crisis. As we are looking for solutions, we're looking to the greatest extent possible maintaining services at the direct level. We've always done that when we've hit a crisis. We are trying to make the least impact on the most vulnerable people. We are keeping, and then, so that's kind of for how is it going to impact people? People that are keeping their eye on is the city being smart about this, and that will lead into how receptive they are to a tax measure, we want to say, well, we are keeping open some vacancies, right, you know, what we're doing now to cut our costs, but really frame it. We've done things, they've made an important first step. As we go into the next step, we know it will be difficult, but these are our objectives. So, just telling that story kind of succinctly rather than just showing out there, we're doing this, we're doing that, and people go, oh, God, wow. So, that's a good stuff.
Appreciate the comment, thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, to follow up on Councilmember Matthews' point, I wholeheartedly agree, the more people feel it, the harder it is to convince them as taxpayers to raise their taxes. And I think that in addition to kind of using our communications staff, our PR team, and talking about it, what we're doing, I think that making sure that we continue and potentially even improve upon or expand upon the services that we know people will see the impact, right? So, you know, I'm just thinking about things like hearing from the Parks Director, we may have to cut the person who, you know, or we don't have staffing to empty trash cans on West, for example, and, you know, people communicating about pileup of trash down by the beach. And so, there's, some of that stuff is really going to be most on the forefront of people's minds, but want to make sure that we not only communicate what we're doing, but demonstrate that directly to the community that's using our facilities. And it's unfortunate that we don't have a way to really capture revenue, aside from the sales tax, of people who are coming, the impact of people who, you know, the tourism has on our open spaces.
Great. Well, if there's no further comments, I'd like to thank Management Partners for providing that presentation today and for all the hard work you're doing to help us understand our fiscal situation here in the city of Santa Cruz. I'd also like to thank staff for all the work that they've been doing, my colleagues on the subcommittee, and for council members for taking the time out today, and for those members of the public who were able to tune in to watch the first of a few more budget committee meetings. And I just want to ask real quick if Laura's still on the line, just around that timeline, so the public's kind of aware of like next steps involved in this process, just to kind of reiterate before we go.
So, at this point, the council feedback will be talked about more within the budget committee, and the direction of the various focus areas from the budget committee with the layering on top of council member additional direction that we heard today will be given to the departments, and the departments are current, will be taking those focus areas to look at their operational budgets, to figure out how they could implement them. We'll be packaging up all of that information, and you would receive an actual budget implementation package to look at, analyze, and adopt in the second meeting in September. That would be September, somebody help me, September 22nd. September 22nd. Thanks, Bonnie.
Councilmember Matthews.
Yeah, so going forward, if we have, you know, further questions, but also bright ideas or further comments on some of these things, who do those go to? Do those go to you, Laura? I mean, you know, technically, Brown Act, it shouldn't go to the three council members who are on the committee, but we're all going to have thoughts, and we want to relay those prior to the next meeting. So, what's the best way to do that?
Please send them to Laura, me, and to Kim, your new finance director, and we'll make sure that the information gets fed into the budget committee agenda and work.
Okay. Or shared in real time as it comes in? Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
All right, with that, thank you all, and we look forward to seeing you all again. Well, the council members and staff will look forward to seeing you all next Tuesday, if not before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.